Six thirty PM, Tuesday, May fourth. And Ashley, can we do a roll call, please?
Of course. Councilmember Anderson?
Here.
Councilmember Lauren?
Here.
Councilmember New?
Here.
Mayor Pro Tim Biasi?
Here.
And Mayor Cowan?
Here. Okay, before, before we get going here, I just want to make a few remarks regarding the Zoom meetings. We haven't done this for a while, so we're just going to do a little update here. This meeting's being conducted by teleconference pursuant to the Brown Act waivers provided for under the governor's executive order in response to the COVID nineteen state of emergency. Our agenda and city website state how the public may address the city council. Members of the public joining the meeting by Zoom who wish to make a comment on any item can press the raise your hand button, wave your hand around so Ashley can see you. And members of the public joining by telephone who wish to make a comment on any item can press star nine. We ask that you please mute your audio until it is your turn to speak to minimize any background noises. And I'll call on each item. And we'll ask after the staff presentation is there, if there's any members of the public that would like to make comment. All oral public comments will be limited to three minutes. Comments over Zoom and the telephone will be taken first, followed by a summary of written comments received prior to the meeting that will be read into the minutes by the city clerk. While the chat function has been enabled to assist with procedural questions that may arise, comments in the chat feature will not be considered public comment. Please raise your hand or press star nine to provide public comment. Alternatively, if you wish, if you don't want to speak at a council meeting, but would like your comment read in the future, you can email your comments to the city clerk by five PM the Monday before the meeting, so the day before. All right, thank you. And with that, we're going to get back to our, our regular program here. We'll go with the pledge of allegiance. And Bill, will you lead us in the pledge tonight?
Yes. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. Under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Hey, thank you very much. All right, next we'll move on to approval of the agenda. Kathleen, is there any changes to the agenda?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. There are no changes, however, staff requests that we pull an item from the consent calendar. It is item C regarding the weed abatement resolution, and we can discuss more. I'll have more information to share when we get to the consent calendar.
And we would be moving that to discussion item number two?
Discussion item number two, or we can take it after the consent calendar is approved, and then you can approve this one separately if you wish.
Okay, that would be fine. We'll, we'll do it that way.
Thank you.
All right, we'll entertain a motion for approval of the agenda with that one change.
News, news, the agenda. I move for approval.
I'll second it.
Okay, we have a motion by councilmember New and a second by Mayor Pro Tim Biasi for the approval of the agenda with the one change to the consent calendar. Okay, Ashley, will you do a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Anderson?
Hi.
Councilmember Lauren?
Hi.
Councilmember New?
Hi.
Mayor Pro Tim Biasi?
Hi.
And Mayor Cowan?
Hi. Okay, motion carries unanimously. Okay, we're going to move on to council comments. And we will start with councilmember Lauren.
Hey, thank you, and it's good to see everyone. On May the fourth, which is today, I met with the city manager and talked about tonight's agenda. Yesterday, May third, I had a VCE interviews for new attorney services. On April twenty ninth and thirtieth, I attended the board of directors meeting for the League of California Cities. It was two days, two full days. On April twenty eighth, I attended a Valley Clean Energy Subcommittee meeting. On April twenty fourth, it was Saturday, I attended the Y E S Youth Empowerment Summit meeting. It was wonderful. There are electors from everywhere in our county, both on the school boards and serving city council and the county. And they had a guest speaker, Secretary of State Shirley Weber. So it was nice. On April twenty first, I attended a logo reveal for the League of California Cities new logo. And on four twenty, the Yellow County Transportation District had a special meeting with staff and and introduced a new management consultant, Marty Toddler. It was, it was a good time. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Councilmember Anderson?
Thank you, Mayor. Yesterday, I had a Zoom meeting with city manager Treppa going over tonight's agenda. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Councilmember New?
Thank you. On April twenty first, I participated in a strong town online meeting about economic growth for small towns. Also, that evening, four o'clock, the city-county two by two, I attended that with our mayor. And on the twenty eighth, I attended the Yellow County Housing Board meeting. On the thirtieth, I attended the Winter Senior Center Furniture Fixtures and Equipment Meeting, and that's all I have to report.
Okay, thank you, Mayor Pro Tim Biasi.
Thank you, Mayor. On April twenty second and April twenty ninth, I attended the city management staff meeting. On April twenty seventh, I attended the planning commission meeting. I believe it's the first one they've had this year, so it was good to get back into that. On April twenty eighth, I attended the two by two meeting with the school district where we had discussions with them on the fireworks show as well as the pool opening and some, some good conversations came out of that, I think. And on May the third, I had the agenda review with city manager Treppa, and that's all I have.
Okay, thank you very much. I just had a couple items. On the twenty first, as mentioned by councilmember New, I was on the county two by two. And I've also had a meeting with the city manager and financial director for the agenda review and the upcoming budget review. And that's all I have for right now, and thank you, everybody, for all your work on the extracurricular activities. And we're now going to move on to public comment. And this is the time when anybody from the public that wishes to speak on an item which is not on the agenda for tonight can address the city council. Ashley, do we have anybody with their hand up or with any written comment for public comment?
I see Mary Ann Boyer's hand up.
Okay, Mary Ann, unmute yourself and...
Okay, this just came up from a friend who has a mother-in-law who's very, very elderly. And she was told from the Waste Management Division that the city of Winters does not have a senior discount plan, but the other neighboring cities do. Whereas someone who doesn't even fill a whole garbage can in a month has to pay full fare, doesn't use the curb service, still has to pay the ten dollars a month. I was wondering, first of all, does the city enter into a contract and is that coming up? And if we have that limitation where we don't have the senior discount, is that something the city council can look at?
Okay, thank you for those comments, and we'll make sure staff comes back with some answers to those questions. Thank you, Mary Ann. Ashley, do we have anybody else with a public comment or any written public comment?
I see Sandra Vikri with her thumb up.
I'd like to talk. I couldn't find the, I don't have my glasses on. So I wanted to come in the city. I'm finally getting some trees planted in the parking lot between the hotel and City Hall. And I look forward to seeing more trees planted on First Street between City Hall and that same parking lot.
All right, thank you very much.
They look nice and healthy, and it's progress. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Anybody else, Ashley?
I do not see any other hands up, and there was no written comment submitted.
Okay, all right, then we're going to move on to the consent calendar. City manager?
Yes, thank you. So there will be three items in this first round of the consent calendar. The first one is the minutes from the regular meeting of April twentieth. The second item is a resolution twenty twenty-one dash twenty, dash twenty-two, which is initiating the proceedings for the annual levy and collection of assessments for the City of Winters Citywide Maintenance Assessment District for fiscal year twenty-one, twenty-two. The final item for the consent calendar at this point is going to be resolution twenty twenty-one dash twenty-five, approving reimbursement agreement for costs associated with the edible food recovery capacity study and sustainable funding assessment in Yellow County. This is a cost sharing agreement with the County of Yellow and the City of Woodland to share in a consultant not to exceed eighty-five hundred dollars, but will be charged on a time and materials basis. And then we'll discuss the weed abatement item following this action.
Okay, is there any questions or comments on the three items they are addressing in the consent calendar by staff? Or, excuse me, by council? No? Okay, Ashley, do we have any comments on the consent calendar?
I am not seeing any hands up at this time.
Okay, we will entertain a motion for items one, two, and four on the consent calendar.
I'd like to move the consent calendar as stated.
Okay.
I will second that, New. Second.
Okay, we have a motion by councilmember Lauren and a second by councilmember New to approve the consent calendar items one, two, and four. Ashley, will you do a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Anderson?
Hi.
Councilmember Lauren?
Hi.
Councilmember New?
Hi.
Mayor Pro Tim Biasi?
Hi.
And Mayor Cowan?
All right, motion carries unanimously. So at this point, we're going to go back to item number three regarding the weed abatement. So Kathleen, let's make another stab at that one.
Yes, thank you. I appreciate that. So staff requested that we take this item separately because we are recommending that the resolution be amended to more specifically state that a dirt pile and other nuisances that might exist at the Olive Grove Development Site also be called out within the resolution so that as we go out and perform weed abatement, if there are other nuisances that exist at this site, it's a stalled development location, we can correct those as well. This relates to the last three parcels that are listed on the exhibit that are attached to the resolution, and that is resolution number twenty twenty-one dash twenty-four. And so I would request that council consider an amendment that states it would be amending the fourth recital and resolution twenty twenty-one dash twenty-four to clarify, quote, "that the Winters Fire Department has identified by street name and assessor's parcel number the lots and parcels within the city upon which weeds or rubbish, refuse, or dirt have been observed and which constitute public nuisances under these provisions," close quote, in accordance with the state's weed and rubbish abatement law. And this is specifically to address some additional concerns that are at the Olive Grove Development Site.
Okay, go ahead.
I was just going to say, and if there are any other questions, Assistant City Attorney Joanna Jane can answer those for you. She's been instrumental in this process.
Okay, thank you for that. I think in addition to what you have on the amendment, personally, I'd like to see that, because those three parcels that are listed on the list, there's, I believe, eighteen or twenty lots out there. I feel it should include the entire develop, in development minus the three lots that already have completed houses. So I don't know how we would want to word that, but it should include the entire development with all the problems we've had with that development regarding dirt piles, weeds, rubbish, the whole list. I, I don't think we should be just singling out three of the, you know, dozen and a half lots. It should include all the lots except the three with completed residents.
Hey, Mayor, if I, if I may add to that,
Yes.
talking with our fire marshal, he did confirm that those additional lots were included under those A P N numbers.
Okay.
You address the pile and include those areas that have not been developed. So that should encompass that particular Olive Grove.
So those three partial numbers encompass the entire development, other than the lots already occupied?
Yeah, it sounds like some of those other lots maybe weren't blocked out or divided up maybe yet.
Okay.
I can confirm that and make sure that that, that is included.
Okay. Yes, Joanna, can you add to that?
Yes, Mayor. So the parcels that are listed on Exhibit A are ones that have already been identified as having a violation. So that means that there are weeds that are currently on those sites. So that has been confirmed.
Okay, well, I just want to make sure it includes all the lots in the development.
Yes.
Because there's been problems with every lot in that development.
Yes, it is my understanding from the chief that it does include those parcels. Although any parcels that are listed do have to be confirmed in advance of the placement on the resolution as being in violation of the weed standards, essentially.
Okay, all right. Is there any other questions or concerns from the council on this item? Ashley, do we have any public comment?
Tina Loudon has her hand up.
Okay, Tina, go ahead.
Tina Loudon, three twenty Neiman Street. Are we talking about the lots that are on Henningway? Because on this list that I'm looking at, I don't see Henningway mentioned at all, but am I in the wrong list?
And Tina, it'd be the last three items on the list of the resolution. It's noted as Henningway Street and Mermont. There's three separate parcels that are identified in that list.
Okay, thank, thank you, Chief Lopez.
You're welcome.
Okay, thank you, Tina.
And I agree with Wade. It is an eyesore, and yes, I agree.
Thank you, Tina.
Their fence is broken, too. Okay.
All right. Okay, Ashley, do we have anybody else with public comment?
I am not seeing any other hands up at this time.
Okay, can you give us a brief summary of the letter that we all received from Mr. Jordan regarding this item?
Uh, Ashley, I'm not sure if you have it up. I can pull it up quickly if you'd like. Yes, if you would pull it up quickly, I do not have it up right now. So very briefly, we received an email that was addressed to the city council and to me, a city manager from Don Jordan. And he was expressing concerns regarding the state of the development area. They've had significant problems over the last three years. And there are concerns associated with dusty conditions, weeds growing in excess of twenty-four inches, debris being blown into the yards, and other nuisances. There's been no activity at the site for nearly sixty days. He's also concerned about a large dirt pile that is at the site, and he's concerned about the amount of time it may take to process or initiate the weed abatement proceedings and then actually abate the property. So he has expressed his concerns, and he would like the city to review the weed abatement process, streamline it, and then hold property owners accountable with no exceptions.
Okay, thank you for that, Kathleen, and I, I believe you've already addressed most of those concerns in the letter with a response back, so thank you for the quick response on that back to Mr. Jordan. Is there any other comment? Councilmember Lauren?
Yeah, I just had a comment that came to mind while thinking about that parcel that Don Jordan wrote about. There's also a kind of a landlocked parcel at the end of Southtown Court that reaches to the back of Valley Oak Park on the west side of town. And I'm just wondering if that landlocked kind of weedy area, if it has been identified, and if not, if it can be identified for weed abatement in the future. It's a really unusual shaped parcel that you could only access from a small access through the side of somebody's house, so, but it's a big landlocked area.
Councilmember Lauren, I'll take a look into that. I think I know what these are talking about.
Thank you.
And I'll circle back around with that. I agree that should be included. I think the question might be whether that falls into city property or district property. I don't know, but we'll take a look at that.
Thank you for your due diligence. I appreciate it.
You're welcome.
All right, is there any other comment on this item? And if not, with amendments mentioned, we would entertain a motion.
I am not seeing any other hands up.
Okay.
I will move this motion as stated by our city manager.
Second, from New.
Okay, we have a motion by councilmember Lauren and a second by councilmember New for item number three from the consent calendar with the changes and amendments. All right, Ashley, we'll take a roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Anderson?
Oh, both I, as stated by the motion maker.
Councilmember Lauren?
You made it.
I got it.
Councilmember New?
Hi.
Mayor Pro Tim Biasi?
Hi.
And Mayor Cowan?
All right, okay, motion carries unanimously. All right, now we're going to move on to our regularly scheduled discussion item. Authorization to establish the City of Winters Senior Center Furniture Fixtures and Equipment Operations Fund with Yellow Community Foundation. Okay, who's taking the lead on this one?
Our Financial Services Director, Shelley Gunby, will.
All right, Shelley, welcome.
Thank you. Good evening, council and mayor. Tonight before you is a recommendation from staff to establish two funds with the Yellow Community Foundation related to our senior center. The first one is the Senior Center Furniture, Fixure, and Equipment Fund. And the second one is a Senior Center Operations Fund. And we're asking you to approve the establishment of that and authorize the city manager and the director of financial management to execute agreements with the fund. So last year, we were notified that we'd been awarded a grant for the construction of the senior center. And while the grant will fund construction and certain fixed pieces of furniture and, and equipment, it will not fund all of the various furnishings like tables and chairs and anything that's not fastened to the building cannot be funded through the grant. So in the fall of twenty twenty, the Winter Senior Center Committee was established by the city council to provide a fundraising effort to support outfitting and getting the senior center ready to open and have everything it needs when it opens. So the senior center received information from the Yellow Community Foundation regarding establishing a fund for senior center donations. And we have, as staff, reviewed that, and we've come to the, the conclusion that establishing two funds with the Yellow Community Foundation would be advantageous. The first thing is they will generate more publicity for the fundraising effort because they do some fundraising efforts their own. Ability to accept donations of items that aren't cash, such as marketable securities, mutual funds, real estate, donations via wills, requests, or trusts. The Yellow Community Foundation will manage the task for the committee, including handling the money, sending information out to the various committee members, and investing the funds so that it has an investment income as long as just, as well as just sitting in the bank. So the senior committee is planning on marketing campaigns for listed donations. The Senior Commission on Aging is also collaborating on this. The senior committee has set a fundraising goal of attracting seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Right now, the city has ten thousand eight hundred and fifty thou, eight hundred and fifty dollars, ten thousand eight hundred and fifty dollars in donations. And they've all been earmarked for the F F and E fund. And we would be willing to transfer that over to Yellow Community Foundation. They need ten thousand dollars to keep the fund open. And no funds at this point have been donated for the Senior Center Operations Fund, but I think that's because we've been more focused on the furniture and fixtures as we started out. So I attached a copy of the foundation nonprofit fund agreement. I have the information for members of the senior center committee that would be getting information from Yellow Community Foundation so that they have that to talk to the board and the other members as donations are received and things like that. So at this point, we would request that you approve and authorize us to open those funds on behalf of the senior center committee and that you authorize city manager and myself to execute those documents on their behalf. And transfer the, and transfer the funds from our account into the Yellow Community Foundation account.
Okay, thank you. Council, have any questions for staff?
Yeah, I have a question, Mayor.
Yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, Shelley, could you tell us, I'm sure the Yellow Community Foundation, they aren't doing this for free. What is the fee that they're charging to do this for us?
It's a minimum of two hundred and fifty dollars a year, or I think it's a three percent base of assets on your asset, so it is a sliding scale. But two, but two hundred and fifty dollars a year minimum. They're providing a lot of value for that two hundred and fifty dollars. They're, they're investing the funds. They're making sure they're safe. They're providing donor information back to the committee so the committee can do the recognition that they need to do. They're providing the ability for folks to donate to someone other than the city, still get a tax write-off because by going into the Yellow Community Foundation, those are tax deductible contributions, and they will track that and provide all the letters for tax deductibility. So when people get ready to do their taxes, they've got all that information. And they'll, they'll provide reports to the committee members, showing the donations, the earnings on the donations, and help guide the committee on any financial decisions they want to make.
So would that fee come out of the fund that they have there for us, or would that come out of city general fund?
Typically, it would come out of the earnings of the fund. So there's investment earnings, and typically it comes out of the investment earnings for the fund.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, any other council questions or comments? Okay, seeing none at this time. Ashley, is there any public comment? I do see that we have some of the members of the senior committee working on this on the meeting tonight, so I don't know if one of them would like to speak or if we have any other public members that would like to speak to this item.
I see Tina Loudon's hand up.
Okay, Tina.
Three twenty Neiman Street. Thank you, Mayor Cowan, and hello, city council people. I had a lot of questions, but thank you, Shelley. I had a lot of questions, but thank you, Shelley. You answered them all. And as you were answering a lot of my questions, I got to go, oh, that's answered, that's answered, that's answered. This is a monumental task that we are embarking on. And to have the professionalism of the Yellow Community Foundation behind us, I think is just valuable. I'd like that the 250 years coming from the earnings of the fund. Do we happen to know what their percentages have been in the past three years? Are they at a three percent return or what? But that's irrelevant maybe, but I'm just kind of curious. I think this is a good turn of events for us. We are a lot of volunteers here. We do a lot of great stuff. As you know, a lot of people that are on that committee are in a lot of other stuff. So I believe that their focus should just go and get those donations. And I hope we get that big grant from CB, whatever the alphabet soup is. I hope we get that grant too and keep us a prize to that alphabet soup grant thing. Thank you, Shelley. Great job.
Shelley.
Thank you, Tina. I think Mary Ann Boyer, I see your hand up. Go ahead.
I just wanted to tell you that as one of the active members on this committee, this has been, this is our biggest milestone to have a place where we can start publicizing and telling people where to send their money, that it is tax deductible, that you do have an option where you want your money to go. I mean, that's all that we've been waiting for so that we can just run with it. So if the city would approve it, we would be very, very happy. So thank you.
Thank you very much. I also see a hand up by Karen May. You're on mute.
Too many, too many options, way too many options. I wanted to say what Mary Ann said. We are so excited to be able to move forward now with our campaign to have an address of where funds can be sent. And this, these funds will go on for years and years in order to support the senior center. Operational expenses as well as equipment that needs to be replaced over time. And we're really excited for this and to get the word out.
Okay, thank you. One thing, is there staff or anybody that, or a committee member that has any idea on the answer to the question that was raised from Tina about the percentage on the earnings? Mary Ann?
Okay, when we first-
I don't have anything on that. I was looking for the documentation for our fund that we have over there that I can't find anything on my desk right now. I'm sorry. So I'm not sure where it's at. It's someplace safe right now.
Okay. Mary Ann, did you have something else before I go to Sandy?
Yeah, when, if my memory serves me well, when we were researching this, they were averaging anywhere from three to five percent. But because of COVID, it's more in the lower three percent now. But Sandy, if she knows something different.
Okay, Sandy Vickery, I see your hand up.
Thank you. I think it's been two months since we actually had our Zoom meeting with that lady, so I don't remember. But I'm a fairly active investor and I thought that for what we're doing, the returns were, we're going to be fine. We want to be conservative in that. And I also thought that the fee structure of what they were charging for their services were certainly in line with, and probably less than what you'd pay somewhere else. I was very impressed with their, with what they're doing over there. And I commend you. I think we're totally making the right move. And I think it'll be much easier to get donations when people know that it's going to go to this Yellow Community Foundation. They already have established their reputation in our community. I thank you for your support.
Okay, thank you, Sandy. Ashley, do we have anybody else with a hand up or other comments or any written comment?
I am not seeing any other hands up at this time, and I did not have any written comments submitted.
Okay, Councilmember Lauren?
Yeah, I just wanted to use this opportunity to speak to, working closely with the executive director Jessica Hubbard. Through the beginning of COVID, the Yellow Community Foundation had money to support our nonprofits. And our nonprofits in the town and city of Winters applied for funding. And Winters probably got $100,000 to nonprofits for needs in our community. The Yellow Community Foundation is a well-known consummate professionals doing great work for Yellow County. And they seem to really like Winters. So I'm really just, you know, I feel really good about this. So I just wanted to convey that they have worked very closely with Winters through the pandemic.
Right, thank you for those comments. Mayor Protim Biasi?
Yeah, Mayor, I just wanted to make a couple of comments. I'd say I think this is a good process to go through that having them manage the funds for us, account for everything. It will take some of this work off of our staff at City Hall who were, as we all know, we're short-staffed as it is. To have an organization like the Yellow Community Foundation handling that will make it much easier and straightforward for people to be able to donate to and for them to get out the records to them at the end of the year for tax purposes, that type of thing. So I really like this idea.
All right, thank you. Councilmember Anderson, did you have a comment or?
I think this is the right way to approach this, especially given the impact COVID has had on all the nonprofits in the city. And we benefited as Justin indicated. I think they have a good reputation. Anyone who's looking for a good way to invest funds, they should talk to the group.
Okay, thank you. All right, if there's no further comment from staff or council, we'll entertain a motion.
I would like to move this item. As I would like the council to approve this item as explained by Shelley Gunby. And just report that I am fully behind this. I've listened to presentations on what the senior foundation will be doing for the FFNE committee, and I think it's well worth doing. And so with that, I move that we approve this.
Okay, thank you. Sir, a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, thank you. We have a motion by Councilmember New and a second by Mayor Protim Biasi. Ashley, can you do a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Anderson?
Aye.
Councilmember Lauren?
Aye proudly.
Councilmember New?
Aye.
Mayor Protim Biasi?
Aye.
And Mayor Cowan?
Aye. Motion carries unanimously. I think this was a very good move for the committee. Thank you all for all your hard work on this too, on the committee. You've got a long way to go, but I've got confidence you're going to get there. Thank you very much. All right, with that, that ends our discussion items for tonight. Take that, Davis. All right, we're going to move on to the city manager's report. Kathleen?
Yes, thank you. I do have a few comments tonight, but I will keep them brief. The alphabet soup, community development block grant, I did want to officially share with the council and the members of the public that we did receive finally our contract from the state for the construction of the senior center. That is $3.5 million. And the good news is, is that we also have an additional $760,000 that has been allocated from program income for this project. So we have a total of $4.26 million. I have signed the agreement. Once the state signs, we are ready to go and we can move forward on the project. We have some things that we still need to do to finalize the plans and prepare the plans and specs to go out to bid. But we now are authorized to move forward with this project, and so I know everybody is thrilled. The Fourth of, well, it's not the Fourth of July, so our Independence Day fireworks show will proceed on July 3rd with our vendor. We met the vendor today out at the high school with the fire department. So we are going to move forward on July 3rd with the fireworks show. And we'll pull together a small working group of staff and volunteers to help us coordinate it this year. So we're excited about that. I wanted to draw everybody's attention to our new agenda management system. If you haven't noticed, we launched Granicus on the agenda side, so our agenda looks slightly different. But we now have hyperlinks to all of the items plus the attachments, which will make it easier for people to locate items of interest in our packet. And starting next council meeting on May 18th, we will go live with our video recording, which means we will be streaming the council meeting through the city's website. And Ashley, a city clerk, will be able to index and tag each of the individual items on that video. So when you watch the video playback, you can go straight, you can fast forward straight to your item of interest. So there will be no more YouTube videos, and that will approve access to public information and council and community dialogue related to specific items. So we're really excited to move Granicus forward. Also, on May 18th will be our budget workshop with the city council. So an important opportunity for the community to hear an update about our budgeting process, how we expect to close out fiscal year 2021, as well as our proposed budget for 2122. So our budget workshop will be May 18th. And then we'll bring back the final draft budget for council consideration and adoption on June 1st. And then finally, a plug for some of our open recruitments for various commissions. The Senior Commission on Aging has three seats available. That recruitment closes May 15th for a term that begins June 1st. We've only received two applications so far for that commission, so we're looking for some more interest. And then the Planning Commission has four seats available. We've received one application thus far, although I think there might be a couple more that come in. That recruitment closes May 30th, so encourage anybody who's interested in either the Senior Commission on Aging or the Planning Commission to reach out to staff, check the website, get an application. And we look forward to seeing people's interest. And that is it from the city manager.
Okay, Kathleen, quick question. When you met with the fireworks people, was there any discussion about next year getting us moved back to the Fourth? Because I know a lot of people have expressed interest in us getting back to doing the fireworks on the Fourth. And then part of the reason why was we lost our certified person when we lost Chief Dozer. And we weren't able to get anybody, so we were left with the Third. But with a year's advance notice, was there any discussion on being able to get back to the Fourth for next year?
There wasn't, but we can certainly put that plug in as we establish that relationship with, you know, new staff here. So, and that would be a Monday, July 4th for 2022. But we can certainly ask that we go down on the list. They'll want us to sign a contract in advance, but we can certainly look at doing so.
Yeah. Okay, all right, thank you. If there's no other comments from council, then we're going to close the meeting. Is everybody good? Okay, we're going to close the meeting at 7:14. Davis, you could never do it. Bye, everybody.
Bye, everyone.